2024 Budget Finance and Investment Committee. And the first order of business will be to approve the minutes of May 28th and June 6th. And I'm going to call on our Vice Chairman Trey Gooch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have reviewed those long minutes and find them to be appropriate. My motion is to approve as presented.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any comments? None? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Second thing on the agenda would be public hearings or public comments. We do not have any public comments or requests to make comments tonight. However, before we go into the rest of the agenda, I'm going to ask Michael to address the questions that we got at the public hearing on the 18th. Michael, if you don't mind. One thing I will mention, one of the questions is about the library system. We'll be addressing the library system in item 11. So, Michael, hold off on that and we'll get to it.
I think the two things that came up during the public comment that I remember, one was the library system, and as the chairman said, we'll address that on item 11 tonight. I think the other question that came up was talking about reducing school funding or education funding. And so, this year, though, we actually funded more than what the school system requested. As far as over maintenance of effort, we gave a little bit over, between 400 and 500,000 over maintenance of effort to the school's general purpose school fund. And then, we gave right at almost $1 million, 900,000 and some change increase to the school's capital maintenance fund. And so, we did increase them again this year twice. We had them take the 177 back before their board. And so, I just didn't want people to think we're taking money from them, we're giving them more than what they requested. And we've had talks as far as this budget plans on some of that growth about opening a new school next year, and we've had plans to address that next year as well, speaking between my office and the Director of Schools Office. So, I believe that was the other question that came up at the public hearing.
Any comments from our committee members on the public hearing? You know, we're going to move ahead to the next item, which is an application for year 24 State Criminal Alien Assistance Program grant. Steve Spence.
Good evening. I'm Steve Spence, the Deputy Chief with the Sheriff's Office. We're requesting to apply for the Financial Year 24 State Criminal Aliens Assistance Program Grant. The grant is a no match. It's a reimbursement for undocumented subjects that are incarcerated more than four consecutive days and has been convicted of two misdemeanors and one felony during the year of July 1st, '23 through June 30th for '24.
Steve, I would also ask that you request the mayor be able to accept that upon...
Yes. We're also requesting the mayor to be able to accept this grant.
Okay, I have a motion to approve this application for grant. Now, here a second. And a second. Any discussion?
How much is it?
It's varied on the amount of undocumented subjects. Last year, we had 171 that met the criteria, and we got $46,070.
Since this is only an application, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries for the application. Item 4, please continue.
We're requesting to apply for the Financial Year 24 Bureau of Justice Assistance Grant to seek funding to purchase body worn cameras. These cameras would be issued to detention officers, transport, courthouse, criminal and civil warrants deputies. This is a three-year grant with a 50% match. If approved, we would apply for $450,000.
Basically, we'd have to match 200, 225, somewhere in that area.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. Again, this is an application?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion or questions from the board? Only one I've got, has this been through public safety?
Yes, sir, it was Monday night.
Okay. I will consider a motion one way or the other.
Is this, Mr. Chairman, is this in the budget to, if we were to get it?
We're going to have some in-fund balance from this year. And if we approve for it, we'd like to come back and ask for some of that money later on this fall when we find out if we've been approved.
So, when we were going through the budget process, when Steve and the grants director, Reba, and then Alyssa were working through this, we didn't have this at the time of their application. However, we knew there's going to be more than this savings from their budget this year that's going to roll into unassigned fund balance. And so, we would plan on using that to fund the match, since it's more of a one-time match, not a reoccurring. And so, that's what we would plan on doing. It'd come out of fund balance, but really, we moved some savings around in this year's budget to have that roll into fund balance, but we didn't have enough chance to put it in their budget request back in March and April when they first submitted it.
Excuse me for a second. I know I had a motion on this, Commissioner Johnson. Did I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I should have said that, got the second before the discussion, but any other discussion? Any other questions?
About how many cameras would this consist of roughly?
219.
Okay. And you've got listed here that the detention, transport, courthouse, criminal and civil warrants...
Yes, sir.
Will be the first priority?
Yes, yes. We currently have them with patrol, and they've got another year on that grant.
Okay.
Yes.
Does that, that covers the price of the cameras itself. Does that also cover the maintenance and storing the footage, everything that's involved with it?
Yes, sir, and then the infrastructure, if we need some for the jail to get downloaded.
So, what's the ongoing cost on, I know you've got it going on the patrol?
About $2,000 a camera, with, you know, everything, with the storage and the back office.
Per year?
I can't, I'm not sure about that, the dollars amount.
Get that for me.
Yes, sir. Is it okay if I present that to you when we ask for the funding?
That'll be fine.
Okay, thank you.
That'll be fine. Any other questions for Michael?
Also on this, I want to, if y'all remember too, during the budget process, we did include the monitoring of the footage. If y'all remember, we included a position in the DA's budget to do that. So, that part, that piece is budgeted for that position. And then, there was some technology equipment that is in their budget this year for the previous cameras that were bought for the, I believe it's for the patrol officers that we bought.
Yes, sir.
So, that reoccurring cost is in, is in the budget. Like I said, that one position though is in the DA's budget, not in the sheriff's, to review the footage, just as a reminder.
Again, this is an application only at this point, so I want to ask for a roll call. Is there any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 5.
We are requesting to apply for the State of Tennessee statewide school resource officers grant. This is a no matching grant for one year. The grant pays 75,000 per school. We're applying for 3,750,000.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Again, this is applying. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 6, application for FY '24 Smart Reentry Housing Demonstration Program. Welcome, ladies.
Good evening. Lindsay Davis, the Reentry Program Coordinator underneath the recovery courts. We are requesting permission to apply for a BJA grant for Smart Reentry Housing Demonstration Program. It is a grant up to $1 million with a 50% match over three years. We will explore different avenues for the funding match as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Again, we're talking about an application. Chairman Harris, your record?
So, this is $500,000 split up over three years, so you're asking for $333,000 a year?
No, the match would only be 500.
Did I do that wrong? $200,000 roughly a year, over three years, 500 total?
The match would be 500 total, yes.
But it's split up over three years?
Yes, it is, yes.
Okay.
Any further questions, Chairman?
Well, just down here it says, "or in kind."
Correct.
So, it may not be cash, it could be...
Correct, yes.
Office, different things, so...
It could be property as well. And so, the partner that we partner with will explore options and bring it back if need be, if we are awarded as well.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any further questions? None? All consider a motion.
So, move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to accept the application. Second, Mr. Serino, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Tom, good evening.
Item 7, funding for Plainview Health and Safety Building. We have one of our PBA representatives coming forward.
Good evening. Tucker Markham, Vice Chairman of the Public Building Authority, filling in for Gary Woznawski, Chairman. We're requesting funding for the Plainview Public Health and Safety Building. On June 4th, the PBA approved a guaranteed maximum price with American Constructors, who have built three of the public health and safety buildings so far. Just to give you a little context, Kitchell, they built, that returned 135,000 to the county. Last Cassis, that just completed, was 860,000 back to the county. Walter Hill, which is a little in limbo still, but 200 to 400,000 returned to the county. It had been very great to work with. So, on June 4th, approved the guaranteed maximum price for Plainview of a cost of construction of $8,783,648, with architect and engineering fees of 133,053, FFNE of 90,000, data processing of 475,808. This was a 5% increase from Last Cassis, which considering the circumstances over the past couple of years where we were seeing, you know, 2% to 3% increases a month, I think we're very, very happy with that. It also includes very large allowances for rock excavation and undercutting that I think they were very liberal on as well, as well as the contractually mandated contingency. And to give some context on that, Walter Hill is at 201,000 and change left over in contingency. So, I've really streamlined it from the first couple of public health and safety buildings. This is with a proposed start date of July, to try to beat the weather on it. But, yeah, happy to answer any questions. Also have Brick Murphy counsel with us for the PBA and Stan Vaught, who's been doing this for, what, 30 years? Who, happy to answer any questions.
You're recognized.
Thank you. A point of clarification, this, so this is, we're projecting an 8.8 million budget for this facility, correct?
The GMP from American Constructors was 8,783,648.
Okay, so almost 8.8 million.
Yes, sir.
And can you tell us what the budgeted cost for Last Cassis and Walter Hill were, the most recent construction?
I can't, I can say that there's a 5% increase from Last Cassis. I don't have the paper in front of me.
So, was the 5% increase from Last Cassis to Plainview only as a result of inflationary costs, or were there some other costs associated with that?
I think every project is unique because you have different circumstances around soil and engineering needs on each different site. So, I'm sure it's across the board. And I think, and the GMP has a line item, line item breakdown that compares it to Last Cassis and the percent increase or decrease from Last Cassis.
Okay. All right, I understand that each site is unique. I guess let me get directly to the point. I'm not trying to put you on the spot here.
Good.
So, this isn't a game of got you, so it is not. But I understand that American Constructors with, let's see, let me get this right, with Kitchell, Walter Hill, and Last Cassis did not require a bond on all their subcontractors. Is that correct?
With this project and this guaranteed maximum price, the contract that the PBA worked and Brick worked very hard on requires every subcontractor to be bonded, and the GMP is reflective of that, of all subcontractors being bonded.
I understand that's in the contract. What I'm asking is, did American Constructors then require that bond from all their subs with Kitchell, Last Cassis, and Walter Hill? Is that reflected in those prices? Because what I'm understanding, Mr. Markham, is that those three projects, while it was in the agreement, American Constructors did not require it, and there was no problem with the subs in their performance. And yet, now with the last project, we are requiring it, and my understanding is we're got an inflated bid of almost 200,000 just because of the performance bond on subcontractors that's required on this project that wasn't required on the previous three. And my understanding from the PBA, which I agree with, is that we've had stellar performance out of American Constructors on these particular projects. Did I misstate any of that?
And they read my mind. I'm going to default to counsel on this one.
And that's fine. Again, Mr. Markham, actually, I'm just trying to understand why we've got almost an 8.8 million, $8.8 million bid, hard bid, when the others came in substantially less than it. I understand we got some souls issues, but I'm trying to pull that out if I can get an understanding.
Yeah.
Recognize Stan Vaught and also...
Thank you, Mr. Markham.
...Brick Murphy to help answer these questions.
Kind of to address that, we, I say we, the PBA's kind of been through a metamorphosis and learned some things during this inflation crisis that we've dealt with the last. And, Mr. Mayor, you've kind of walked in in the middle of one of those.
I did.
And what we learned, and Brick has worked with us to that through this, is that we figured out that one of the major problems, and I'm going to go back to One Stop, that was the catalyst here, that subcontractor was not bonded that gave us that low-ball bid, and that's what put the whole project in chaos.
That is correct, and I remember that quite well. And as a matter of fact, we had to negotiate by this county commission saying, "We're going to pony up for an addition," I believe, $600,000.
You are correct, Mr. Mayor. So, the discussion for the last 18 months to two years with the PBA and Brick as counsel, what can we do, what can we change, what do we have control that we can change as the PBA to not, to assure the taxpayers of Rutherford County are not stuck that way again? And this was the conclusion we came to. Any subcontractor that works on any of our projects, over $100,000 has to be bonded. Prior to this contract, I believe I'm telling this right, Walter Hill, Last Cassis, Kitchell, we did not necessarily do that. We took Americans' recommendation for subcontractors, and each wanted to put y'all a little bit at ease. American has solicited anywhere from three to six bids for all the subcontractors that work on these projects for us. And in fact, when they brought the original proposal or this price to us, it's about $300,000 cheaper. But there was, Tucker, do you remember, three or four subs that would either refuse to buy the bond or were not bondable or couldn't get a bond? Not to say they were bad subcontractors.
Right. And if I may stand, just, I guess I want to get, understand this, but those, this is American contractors, constructors, who has built three of these buildings that everybody says has gone on without a hitch.
Right.
And I would say, along, according to Adam Dodd, has done an absolutely phenomenal job overseeing these projects.
We would agree.
And so, their ability to perform at this level is in large part because of their ability to pick quality subcontractors.
Correct.
And the subcontractors they have chosen on Kitchell, Walter Hill, and Last Cassis have performed admirably. And I might add, even to the extent, I believe, as it was at Last Cassis, where they had to pull up the concrete and replace it, and they did that at their own expense.
Correct.
So...
Walter Hill.
Was it Walter Hill?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So, my point is, I understand that the county wants to make sure that it is in a risk adverse position, but I wonder if we're overpaying for the risk that won't be necessary, given American Constructors' stellar performance with the performance of the previous buildings and their subcontractors.
If the commission felt that way and would give us permission to do that, we would be more than happy to do it. In fact, Gary and I had the discussion kind of off the cuff, and I think Tucker was in on it too. I said, "You know, Gary, you and I have been around the building business, and we've done enough projects in our life. Hey, if my contractor says use this guy, I'm going to use the guy." But we thought, we have taken the position as the PBA, that we are being stewards of the money that you are giving us to monitor for you, and we just did not feel that we needed to put the county in that liability without some other body okaying it. Does that make sense?
It makes perfect sense, and I think for...
We didn't feel like we had the authority to do that.
On that, you and I and Mr. Markham completely agree. And so, what I guess I'm trying to determine is, are we paying too much for insurance that is really not necessary, given the performance of the previous facilities that American Constructors has already had with this county and those subcontractors? And I go, in other words, if it ain't broke, what are we trying to fix, Stan?
It's just a liability issue, and we didn't, we didn't want to make that decision without another body telling us, "Yeah, it's okay," because the general contractor is bonded.
Right, exactly.
So, nobody, I mean, he's bonded.
And just to be clear, they're the backstop anyway.
We feel that way, yes.
Okay, so let me ask you this, can we quantify the number for the additional risks that we're talking about with regard to the additional bond for those subcontractors? Do we have that, do we, can we quantify that?
It's about $300,000, if I remember right. Is that what you remember?
So, we've got a $300,000 additional price tag on this, on, push on this facility.
It's extra insurance, if you want to, it's extra insurance.
That's...
That we probably will not use, but...
And we haven't used before.
I don't want to sit in one of those negotiations like me and you had to again.
I will tell you this, I know that, and with all due respect to Brick, who I have a great deal of respect for, and contracts are great, but let me tell you something, contracts get broken all the time. And with One Stop, we had an ironclad contract, and we still had to write checks for $600,000. So...
Sorry, after the One Stop project, Brick and Nick spent hours and hours and hours going above and beyond your standard contract in this situation. And anytime there would be any deviation from that contract, there was lively discussion, about a two-hour-long discussion at the PBA about it. And like Stan said, if we want to deviate from that contract, I think that's the will of the commission and this body, and perfectly okay with the PBA, perfectly okay with the PBA.
And thank you, thank you for that. I'm only, I'm only looking out like this, this committee for the, make sure that every dollar we spend is a dollar well spent and not unnecessarily spent. And since American Constructors is not Rock City, and so, and the public safety buildings are not One Stop, and I just want to make sure that if we're going to spend an extra $300,000 that we haven't had to necessarily spend on the previous three projects, is it on the last public safety building an absolute necessity? And so, I'm raising the question. Thank you, Mr. Markham. I do appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Murphy, you're recognized. Welcome, Brick.
Brick Murphy, counsel for the PBA. I might just want to add that after the One Stop negotiations, the PBA tasked me with going back and looking at the contract and pushing any potential risk back on the contractor. And one of the ways that we thought was appropriate for, for risk sharing was to have subcontractor bonds. And so, then we don't just look to the contractor and their insurance company, they're going to be looking to their subs and as a way of sharing risk. You know, there's costs associated with that, and these are policy decisions. I mean, how much risk are y'all willing to take and the PBA is willing to take? And I think after One Stop, that answer was no risk. And that might be different in this situation than it would have been then, but the idea of the contracts are to have them be as fairly uniform as we can have. And the theory also was, we wouldn't be coming back to you guys asking for more money if there were problems in the future. Because with the One Stop project, we had a sub that wasn't bonded, you know, we had some risks that the contractor there was going to walk. And if that had happened, you know, we're calling their bond, right? They're calling their bond, but, you know, they're less likely to walk if their subs are who defaulted and they've got money that's being, you know, potentially there to cover their risk associated with those subs. Does that make sense? It's risk shifting, and how much risk do you guys feel comfortable is the commission telling the PBA to take on? And how much risk does the PBA want to take on? And those, you know, less risk is more expensive. So, that's, those are policy concerns, and, you know, I'll draft whatever type of contract y'all tell me to. But my understanding, my charge was, you know, not just a bomb shelter, but a force field around that bomb shelter. And that's what you've gotten here, and the hope is to return money to the county, not to come back if we've got problems. And hopefully, we never have the building market like we did during One Stop, and hopefully, we don't have problems with subs like we did then, but we worked through them. But, yeah, the idea here is, we don't come back to you guys asking for money, more money. We've got people to pay if they default.
I've got a question. Michael, do you have an exact figure on how much that extra insurance, basically those extra bonds are costing on this?
I believe based on the two GMP contracts that I saw, the difference was 221,586.
221...
586.
586.
And I'm basing that, I've not been sitting as part of the PBA meetings, but I've seen two contracts, and Brick can correct me if I'm wrong, from Elon. The original one was 8,562,62, and then the one that was read tonight, that was 8,783,648, were the two that I saw, about a week maybe in between or so of my emails that I got. So...
So, you're, we're basically looking at 221,000 difference to have the bonds versus not having the bonds on the subcontractors. Any comments from the committee?
I've got a question for Michael. Michael, is the grant money that we had for this, these projects, is it completely depleted or is there money left?
So, if you'll, on your iPads tonight, I did prepare something and put it on there, and you'll see 4 point, a little over 4.6 million is going to be left of ARPA money, of the COVID money. Now, that does not include the savings from Last Cassis or Walter Hill, because I haven't gotten the final pay apps to release the retainage. Now, the estimates I'm seeing are very close, they're not the exact number, but they're close to what I believe Tucker read earlier, somewhere in that 700 to 800,000 range. So, there will be a little more than that. The remainder will come out of Fund 171, which is non-ARPA money. And so, that right now will be about 4.7 million. I think that'll ultimately end up being reduced to about 4 million out of non-ARPA money. But as of right now, the estimate is 4.6 million of ARPA money, and then the remainder of this project would be funded with non-ARPA money.
And one thing I might add, that Tucker brought to my attention, and he's right. One of the things we asked from contract number one to contract number two was for American to put the money for the permits, the City of Murfreesboro permits in, as well as some fees associated with that. So, that, you know, the idea is we're outside the city store customer, we're going to have to, you know, pony up at City of Murfreesboro with some permit fees and that sort of thing. Tap fees.
And then finish answering your question, this will, this project will deplete the remainder of those ARPA COVID funds. And then, the remainder of this project will be funded with non-COVID money.
Okay, thank you. I also have a question for the PBA, since we've got, we've got two members here and their attorney. In the beginning, we walked through Pettis Reed's program time after time after time, what was going to be in these buildings, what they were going to look like, et cetera. We went to the trouble, and we have built tornado shelters in them, which that is great. People are already using those. Why did you not put the tornado sirens on the building? To my knowledge, there's no tornado siren on any of these new buildings, and it was told in the beginning they would be there.
Frankly, we'll have to look at that issue and come back to you.
This money that's left over, I'd love to see the two buildings in my district at Last Cassis and Walter Hill have those sirens put on it for the people in the communities. That way, they'll know to come to the tornado shelter. That was kind of part of the whole, whole plan. These buildings were for the communities, and that way, they would know it. Now, I asked one of the contractor generals today at Walter Hill, why? I asked him point blank. I said, "Is there a tornado siren on this building?" "No." He said, "There's not one on any of them." That goes from on back to the Rockville building. I said, "Well, why not?" He said, "Well, it was designed to go in that tower, and if it went off, you couldn't even hear yourself think inside the building." Well, I guess that makes sense. Why not put it somewhere else on that property, on a pole or whatever it took to make that happen? I would really like some answers on that, or really like to see that happen, because it's beneficial for the purpose of the buildings.
I'll look into that. I mean, there's been... I'll look into that. I mean, there's been deliberations about every single thing on all these projects, but I want to give you a good answer. So I'll look and get back to you, Commissioner Pearson.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Irvin?
Yes, a few questions. So the insurance trade-off, we would save 300-
$221,586 and some change.
Okay, so that's the additional cost.
That is an estimate, that is an additional cost for the bonds for the subcontractors. The contractor is already bonded, is my understanding. Is that correct, guys?
So why are we paying the, I'm just trying to figure out why we're paying the extra $200?
It's the next highest bid.
What?
It's the next highest bid, the cheapest person in those categories, so let's, I'm just throwing an example out there, let's say concrete, for example. The cheapest person, for example, couldn't or wouldn't get a bond, and so going to the next lowest bidder is the cost increase. So it's not just the bond itself.
The general contractor is the backstop for everything, correct?
Right.
Why are we paying, I mean, why are we paying the extra, any extra amount? Why would we, I mean, I'm trying to understand kind of the thought process here.
So, I mean, it's just risk shifting.
Other than kind of the super bulletproof, you know, bomb shelter, you know, concept of protecting in a contract, why are we doing that?
So the concern is, you've got a contractor who's got a sub who defaults, right?
Sub to what, I'm sorry?
The concern is, you've got a subcontractor potentially who defaults, like walks away in the middle of the project, whatever. And you've got a contractor who's responsible. I mean, we've got their bond company, right? But if there are other bond companies that basically backstop their bond, it's just extra protection for them walking, you know? And if you have a contractor who's not going to go belly up, and you've got a good bond company, then we should be fine. But, you know, it was in response to some problems with One Stop, to be honest.
And that's fair, but it sounds unnecessary. I guess that's one word that comes to mind.
These are policy decisions. It is, like I said, a bomb shelter with a force field around it, you know, protection-wise. I mean, it is the ultra-protection.
I mean, just kind of based on where we are, I'm not sure we need that.
I understand.
It's what I'm struggling with a little bit. Okay, so that's one piece of it. The other piece, if I'm reading this correctly, we're going to spend 9.4 roughly, or 9.5, and we've got funding from, from where, and one, from 146, and then we've got another 4.8 roughly from 177?
So the 127 is that ARPA money? Then when you see on your iPad, it says estimated from 127.
The 127 is ARPA money.
And that's, the reason I say estimate is because I do agree with their estimates on savings, but I can't count those because I haven't received the final payout. And so I would assume we're going to have additional 800,000 that would come out of 127. And then for 171, I would assume that'll come down. But we already had money set aside for Dell Webb. And if you remember, we had the overage on Walter Hill and Last Cassis, and we moved money from Dell Webb to cover those overages, and we'll move the money to cover this overage from Dell Webb, and that's where we're moving this money.
That zeros out, Dell Webb.
Dell Webb will have a little bit of money left, and we won't know exactly how much until we finish the first five buildings, till we, till I get the final payouts and release all the retainage. I still haven't received the final payout on either Last Cassis or Walter Hill from American. And we have some other outstanding invoices from some of the FFNE and stuff as well, but there'll be a little bit left for Dell Webb, but not enough to build the building new.
And then the thought process for Dell Webb is, or is there one? What happens?
I guess, can you give a more direct, with a thought process for Dell Webb? Can you be a little more specific?
Sure. I mean, is the plan to build it or not?
So the plan is, we have the property, of course, but as I've said before, because of Smyrna now making plans to extend the sewer to, all the way out to Almaville, where our current location is for the volunteer fire department, and because that is a more suitable location for a public safety building, i.e. fire hall, we're stepping back from committing to Dell Webb until we see if Smyrna extends that sewer. They're expected to, I've been told, in the next 18 or 24 months, which quite honestly makes sense, because as you know, Commissioner, this particular department's grown pretty fast, and we probably just need to, after we get Plainview in place, we probably just need to pump the brakes a little bit. And so, and then we'll see where they're at with regard to sewer in Almaville, because that would certainly be a much more suitable location as it relates to response time. So we're just keeping our options open right now. So the plan is Dell Webb or Almaville, and of course, I haven't come to this body with a recommendation yet because it's too early, but it's still, certainly it's still on the table.
So what needs to, it sounds like there's an open question about the insurance savings, in my mind. And there's funding, there's some plans for maybe doing an Almaville, okay? Don't we kind of need to think about that before we approve this one? In other words, the insurance piece and the other, to kind of think this through?
This one has a deadline on it, because we have to allocate the ARPA money. And so we kind of, well, there's another allocation, that's suspended, there's an allocation portion that we really needed to get done by the end of this year. And so I asked the PBA to move up their timeline a little bit on the GMP, and they did. So thank you for that. They moved that up to get it into this June meeting. And so tonight, if you would like to move forward with the construction, really, you would either need to approve the number in front of you, or I'm assuming the other option would be, Brick, if Elan then would still agree to the 8.5 million dollar number, I don't know if they would or not. I think those would be the two options before you.
It potentially would be approve the number before you guys today with an alternative, maybe to go with the cheaper option for the other subs, if they're still available. Because I think we need to confirm that they are. I wouldn't want to have you guys approve the lower number and then find out those subs are now on another project, because they don't think they're going to get it. So that might be the wise way to go. Just because we, another concern is weather, and if we don't break ground, my understanding is, you know, July, we want to get out there and start moving dirt.
Let me ask a question. Thank you, Brick. So if this body gave you the authority to go back, if this body gave you the authority, go back to American Constructors and say, if those subs are available who weren't bonded, do, does this body have the authority to tell you, to ask you to do that, with American Constructors saying, there were four subs that refused to be bonded or wouldn't get bonded, we've got three of them, one of them didn't go, so here's the revised amount? Does this body have that ability to give you that authority, is what I'm asking?
Yes. I mean, the PBA works at the behest of the county-
Okay.
And subject to their appropriations. And if you say, here's the budget, and we're not worried about the bonds for the subs, then those are our marching orders, right?
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion, any further questions? Not, I will entertain a motion. Got a motion for the entire amount? Chairman Harris, is that your motion?
It is.
$909,482,509. Is that, is that correct?
Chairman Harris, can you include everything that was presented on the iPad? Is that, that gives me the authority. We want to spend the ARPA money first, and we've got that in the note on there for me to allocate that, if you can maybe approve that as presented or put that as part of your motion.
$800 has already allocated to Fund 171 for the Plainview. Cassis will be moved to the Plainview.
Okay, that's a-
Construction's a $1,783,000. Cost says in $475,808 for an estimated total cost, non-med, $482,509.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is the second okay with that? Second is okay. We have a motion and a second for the discussion. Call roll, Mark.
Mr. Sereno?
Yes.
Mr. Gooch?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
May I ask?
Mr. Irvin?
Yes.
Oh, I can't see him, so I'm sorry. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner P.?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
May I ask, do you want me to pursue the subcontractors that are not bonded? Is that, or should I go with the bonded subcontractors? I just want to make sure that I've got my marching orders.
I think this motion answered that question.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was doing what you told me to.
If I hear something other than that from the committee-
Thank you, thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, what I, what I, thank you. What I think, Brick, they were saying is, they want you to proceed with the recommendation of the PBA as presented by Mr. Markham. Did I understand that right? Thank you.
Just wanted to make sure if I was following my marching orders. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right. Item eight, grant request through the Rutherford opioid board. Michael, you're going to cover this for us?
So there is four items here that was approved at the Rutherford County Opioid Board. If approved here, these will be added under item 11 when we get down to it. Also, what you don't see here that was already approved was an amount for Interfaith Dental that's been approved at a previous meeting. So if these were approved, these will be added to Interfaith Dental that will also be added under item number 11, if approved. But this would, this approves money for Hustle Recovery, the Prevention Coalition for Success, Kamari House, and Endure Athletics.
Any questions from the committee? We need a motion to approve this. Michael, I will entertain a motion if I don't hear any questions.
I saw pull.
I have a motion from Commissioner Sereno, second. Chairman Harris, any further discussion? Hear none, call roll.
Mr. Sereno?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner P.?
Yes. Motion carries. And just a reminder, that money we're talking about there is coming out of the opioid money that's not out of our general budget. All right, item nine, the 2023-24 budget amendments, as necessary. And the first handful is going to be Michael. I think the last three, Brian, we'll call you up and torture you a little bit, so. Michael, please.
So it's up to, it's up to this committee, if you would like, I have seven amendments tonight. I can cover them all at once, or I can cover them individually, and y'all just let me know how you'd like me to proceed.
All at once? Well, no, we can do it all at once. I will say this, as he's going through that, if somebody has a problem, let me know, and we'll pull that one out. Just continue as one for now.
So I'll go and order a fund number here. We'll start with the general fund, and they're all going to be very, very, very similar. And so if we're looking at Fund 101, which is going to be our largest amendment, both in number of lines and dollar amount, the first part of that, that you'll see, the first, really four pages are going to be adjusting revenue. And every year, we like to adjust revenue based on current estimates that we've gotten and received. This also helps us budget for next year, and look and see how much money we're going to have for one-time projects and things like that. And so that's what you see on the first four pages. I won't read every line, because there are several lines. And we adjust things down as low as $140 as one amendment, but we also adjust things up, you know, into the millions of dollars if that estimate is coming, is coming in high. The other thing I'll mention is, starting on the fifth page, the fifth and sixth page are going to adjust our expenditures and reserves. And so if you'll notice, we're adjusting several expenditures, and a lot of those are salaries, but I want to, this does not include any new positions, this does not include any raises. What this is, is several payouts from people, as we'll have somebody retires and they receive a large payout. Or you'll see some medical insurance lines that we adjust. That could be that somebody moved family coverage from single to family, several things like that. We also wait and do our unemployment at the end of the year, because we don't know which department that unemployment expense is going to hit. And so, and then also on the last page, you'll see the increase to reserves. And so that's as we're moving money. Some of this money, as you'll see, there's, we did not budget our opioid money at the beginning of the year, because we didn't know how much we were going to get, because we get random payments through several settlements that are not restricted. And so you'll see that, that money will stay restricted even into next year, and y'all just approved a second ago, some opioid money. So I'll be glad to answer any questions on that on 101. They're all going to be a very similar format, the next few funds. But if there's any questions, I'll be glad to take those. If not, I'll move on to Fund 116. Fund 116 is going to be the exact same explanation as the general fund that I just gave. It's definitely a lot smaller, but again, we're adjusting for leave payouts, things like overtime. And you'll also notice, some of these estimates are a little high, because we don't have an opportunity to come back for another budget amendment. But over the next two weeks, we have another payroll that'll run in July, but that payroll is allocated to June, to this fiscal year, depending on when that overtime or when those hours were worked. So we'd much rather address that high than we would low, so we're not over budget. But that's the same explanation for 116 and 118. The other thing I will add is, on all these amendments, we adjust trustees' commission. That's required for us to adjust every year, because we don't know how much money we're going to receive. And the trustee takes a certain commission on the revenue that they collect for us. And the other one I will point out, the same explanation on every fund, except when we get to 151. Now, on our 151 Fund, our debt service fund, you're going to see a large amendment for $18 million for a refunding debt issue and for a refunding bond. That is due to the refunding that we did this spring. And so we couldn't budget for that, because we don't know how much the refunding piece was going to be. So if you'll notice, there's both a revenue and expense that equals out, so it doesn't affect our fund balance. But that's due to the refunding, and you'll notice it's in an account called Refunded Bond to the escrow agent, and that's where we did that refunding. And with that, I'll take any questions on any of those funds.
Anyone want to pull any particular fund separate from this vote?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Hear none, call roll, Mark.
Commissioner Sereno?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Irvin?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner P.?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Michael. Brian, if you want to come on up, item H, I, and J are under the school boards.
Good evening, Chairman, Mayor, Commissioners. Brian Runyon, CFO, Rutherford County Schools. Chairman, I have five different amendments here, and they're all in three different funds. Do we want to go by fund or just do each amendment individually?
Mark, do we have any?
You can do by phone, that's fine, yeah.
Let's go that route.
Okay. So we've got two amendments in Fund 141, which is our general-purpose school fund. The first amendment is budget amendment number 10. And what this does, it takes FY23-24 General Purpose School Fund and increases expenditures and accounts where indirect costs occurred in the amount of $1,241,053. It also increases revenue in account 49,800 transfers in for the same amount. This amendment budgets for indirect costs related to the child nutrition program that are accumulated in Fund 141 and are being reimbursed by Fund 143. Indirect costs are incurred for the benefits of multiple programs, functions, and other cost objectives, and cannot be readily identified as having been incurred, especially for the school food service program. Indirect costs include custodial service, utility costs, liability insurance, et cetera, and are incurred by Rutherford County Schools during the operations of the food service program. There will be another amendment in Fund 143 that matches this. This is taking money and putting it into Fund 141. This is what this amendment is.
Mr. Chairman, help me understand, how do, if it can't be readily identified as incurred for that fund, how are these accumulated? Can you just give me an idea?
So for example, we may have custodial staff, you know, doing work in the cafeteria that we pay those custodial staff out of Fund 141, and we are- So, for example, we may have custodial staff, you know, doing work in the cafeteria that we pay those custodial staff out of Fund 141. And we are reimbursing 141 for those indirect costs that we cannot readily know exactly how much work they do in the cafeteria versus the rest of the school. So, those are indirect costs that the state allows us. And that indirect cost rate is developed every year by the state for us to be able to take out of one fund and into another. It's also very similar to our Fund 142 federal programs. We also take indirect costs out of those programs to move into 141 for those costs that occur within the 141 program for federal funds.
Is it a formula?
Yes. It's a complicated formula that you probably don't want to get into tonight. But if you want me to send it to you, I definitely can.
That's fair. I really don't want to get into the formula. I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah. It is a formula.
All right.
Mr. Chairman.
You're recognized.
Just for my satisfaction, and I want you to be clear, none of this $8 million is going for new positions or pay raises?
I'm not on that one yet. But whenever I get to it, yes. Yes. No.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We've looked at the first budget amendment, and we were going by funds. And if I read the committee correct, you want to do these together by funds. So, can we go ahead and look at the second one at the same time?
Okay. So, this second amendment is also in Fund 141. And this is our year-end cleanup amendment that budgets $8,158,644 for items such as leave payouts, increases for degree and certification, pay scale changes, hard-to-staff bonuses and stipends, insurance premium increases, adjustment for the amended Innovative Schools Model Program, additional costs for contracted services, and capital outlay for construction. Funding for these expenses come from additional TISA revenue for outcome and fast-growth funding collected above budgeted amounts and moving current budget expenditures between multiple accounts and within object codes. And to answer your question, Commissioner, no. None of this is for new positions or salary.
Any other questions from the committee?
Mr. Chairman.
You're recognized.
Okay. So, it looks like the biggest components, there's a teacher component, and then there is a medical insurance component?
There's teacher components. There's instruction components. There's operations components. And your largest component in here that has increased is the medical insurance because as with us going to the state insurance program last year, we had a 5.4% aggregate increase in our medical insurance. So, with that said, when we did the budget last year, we did not have all of those complete numbers. So, that's what... And our board chose to accept the full amount of the increase instead of passing it to our employees. So, that is the majority of your increase, which if you calculate it out, it's about $8.1, $8.2 million between the increases and decreases.
Because I think when Dr. Sullivan was here, there was mention made that he was going to push back against that or not recommend the medical expenses?
I believe that's going to be for the '24-25 school year.
The next year's budget.
Yeah. This is for the '23-24 school year, so what we've actually already incurred. So, that was not pushed back, or that was voted on by our board not to approve that. And we accepted the full... The district accepted the full responsibility for those increases.
Okay. Full responsibility this year. Okay.
Hopefully, a little bit of pushback next year. So, because I don't think within our budget that we currently have or that will be... Hopefully, will be adopted, that we have the ability to be able to take that increase on, that full increase next year.
And that was part of my question. This is based on new TISA money, basically?
Yeah. What this is, is actually TISA money that we generated in the '23-24 school year based off of outcomes funding and then also the fast-growth funding. So, this actually is budgeting that revenue that was generated in '23-24, not the '24-25 school year. So, this is a cleanup amendment for FY 23-24 that we're currently in right now.
Okay. So, and the teacher increase is what?
The teacher increase is everything from leave payouts. They retire. We're not... We don't know who's retiring until, you know, we get their retirement forms. So, leave payout, also bonuses and stipends, which was a large amount of it for our hard-to-staff schools, which we will not be doing again next year. That was almost $3 million itself.
Okay. And do you... It just struck me as a pretty high number. Maybe it's not. Is that... Maybe the more senior folks on the committee can tell me. Is this a fairly typical number? Or is this... Or is this an $8 million budget amendment in 141 at the end of the year? I'm just trying to sort out what the difference is or the comparison.
I don't have the numbers from last year, but this is a lot higher than what we normally see, in my opinion. Now, I'm not on Health and Ed. I don't have exact figures there. But I don't recall these kind of numbers in the past. And two, we're looking at a current year, and we're looking at, you know, they're making up whatever problems they've got. They're adjusting their budget. And they're talking about TISA funds, which is not coming out of our pocket straight away. And of course, it is indirectly. But it's... I'm like you. It seems high to me from what I'm used to seeing.
I will say this, that $4.2 million that you see, we also put that in there to make sure we padded because we got an audit finding last year because we did not budget enough in that teacher line item. So, we did everything additional that we had out of TISA that did not need to go somewhere else. We put into that teacher line item to make sure that we were not going over budget. But the TISA money is the state-funded money. So, that's not the local portion. The outcomes funding and the fast-growth funding is 100% funded by the state, not the local funds. So, that's what we're basically budgeting in there. And then, we're also moving money around within the budget in order to be able to cover those shortcomings in different line items.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I feel the need to point out that all of these items are thoroughly discussed this past Monday night at Health and Ed. It might have been Tuesday night at Health and Ed. Those questions were asked and probably thoroughly discussed, and it passed unanimously through Health and Ed.
Any further discussion? If not, I will entertain a motion for the 141 Fund amendments. Well, we'll give you another moment, and then we'll move to the next fund. Hear, no motion? I'm not sure how we're going to have to handle that, Michael. Have you got any suggestion?
I will say, obviously... Sorry, I had to step out to use the restroom here. This amendment, if not passed, will likely... No. It will result in a finding from the Commerce Office. I will tell you that. And then also, and I would have to look at the current, where we're currently on the budget. I would have no authority to appropriate certain money if we were to run over for any teacher payroll that runs in July or August for either their insurance or for the teacher payroll.
I might also mention, you've talked about it's an $8 million amendment. But it's an $8 million to a $582 million budget, which is 1.4% of their budget. So, it's in proportion to the budget that they have. It's a small number.
Brian?
This $8.1 million that's coming from the state, it's coming whether you approve it or not. I mean, it's going to go into our budget anyways, into our revenue. So, we're using that money to budget in the expenditure lines. So, as Michael said, you know, we will not have these audit findings going into, in the '23-24 school year. So, that's how we did it. So, we will be receiving this TISA funding whether it's approved here tonight or not.
Chairman Gooch?
Thank you. I will go ahead and make a motion to approve the amendments as presented.
Second.
Motion. I have a second. Further discussion?
Question, Mr. Chairman. The sustainability of this level? I'm trying to get a sense for additional costs and anticipated TISA revenue. Do you have any sense for sustainability of this kind of, this level of increase, et cetera?
Yeah. So, part of the way, TISA functions very similar to the way BEP did. I mean, the calculation's a little different, but it functions essentially the same. So, what happens is in TISA, you get what's called fast-growth money. But that money, let's say the school system grows at 2,000 kids this year. They're trying... That is the state's way of trying to say, hey, we recognize you're growing faster than most. So, we're going to try to help you. Now, it doesn't give them a full year of funding for those 2,000 kids in my example. But the point I'm trying to make is that $8.1 million is a reoccurring revenue. That is now built into the TISA estimate that the school board has presented this budget year. And I think going, looking at the two largest amounts, the insurance, I believe the director, the staff's recommendation to the board was this year, and Brian or Ms. Dr. Martin will have to correct me, was not to absorb the 5% increase this budget year. And I believe the board voted to absorb it. And so, I believe their recommendation was not to do that. And then, the board voted to do that, to absorb it anyways. And so, they were required then to shift some of that fast-growth money, the $3 million, down to medical insurance. But as far as absorbing this in the future, they have absorbed that cost. Should... That cost should be in the reoccurring in their Fund 141 budget that you'll see here in a minute on item 11. It should be there. And that $8.1 million or almost $8.2 million is in their TISA estimate for next year. Now, I think as far as what happens in the future, that determines what the board does because they haven't received their insurance increases yet, at least as they may have by now.
We have by now, but we're actually presenting it to them probably in early August.
So, that would be... They do not have it to absorb all this year. And I think that's what Brian was saying. They're not going to be able to absorb all that without some type of revenue or expense amendment for '24-25 budget. But for this budget, that's what their board voted to do.
So, it seems like it works for this year's budget. I get that. But the question is kind of in the out years. If... That's part of what I'm struggling with a little bit, just in terms of the sustainability of an $8 million increase or whatever number it is over a period of time. I don't have a solution yet. Kind of just trying to sort through this. But I'm trying to figure out if that is a sustainable increase.
It obviously isn't a sustainable increase. But that's the reason why I think this year, when we talk about insurance, you know, it's going to be more... It's not going to be 100% absorbed by the board. So, that's one of the things that we are looking at, you know. Whenever we do have that conversation, is presenting them with analysis of, okay, if you absorb this much, it's going to cost this much. If you decide to half and half, 75, 25, you know, whatever it may be. As the state continues, as the insurance continues to increase, we're going to give them five-year projections to see what that's going to look like. And then, we're also going to take it out and see what it would look like, different scenarios, depending on what their amount they're willing to absorb is and how much that's going to cost.
Yeah. And I understand about the insurance. I'm trying to... There's also this 4.3 million for teachers, which I'm all for, paying teachers more. But I want to make sure. You've already said there's no increases and no new people. I'm trying to understand what that is.
As I said earlier, the $3 million, there's $3 million of that 1 point or $4.2 million that was paid out for hard-to-staff bonuses, which we are no longer doing in the '24-25 season.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Call roll. Mark.
Commissioner Serino?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Irvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Piercy?
Yes.
Commissioner P?
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay. So, this next item is an amendment in our Fund 143, which is our school nutrition fund. This is the other side of the first amendment that I read in 141. This is centralized cafeteria fund amendment increases $99,105,90 transfers out and decreases $34,570 restricted fund balance in the amount of $1,241,053 to budget for indirect costs that are accumulated in Fund 141 being reimbursed by Fund 143. Indirect costs are incurred for the benefits of multiple programs, functions, and other cost objectives that cannot be readily identified as having been incurred, especially for the school food service program. Indirect cost rates are calculated annually by TDOE, and the child nutrition programs use the unrestricted indirect rate costs. The FY 23-24 unrestricted indirect rate for Rutherford County Schools is 10.94%.
Any questions on this? Or if not, I'm going to have him go ahead and move to the next amendment. Go ahead with your second one, Brian.
Okay. So, the second amendment is still in Fund 143, School Nutrition. Basically, this is our cleanup for the 143 budget. The centralized cafeteria year-end cleanup amendment budgets funds for expenditures such as food supplies and materials and the transportation of those items. This amendment moves money from and to multiple line items without increasing or decreasing revenues and expenditures. This allows several line items to have money amended into them, so they will not be over budget at year-end.
You've heard his recommendations. Any questions? Hear, none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, this is actually just kind of the pass-through, right? Is that basically what we're talking about?
No. What this is, is just the 143, yes. I mean, it's no increase or decrease to the revenue or expenditures in this fund. Or are you talking about the first amendment? Which amendment are you talking about in there?
Second one.
The second one. Yeah. All we're doing is moving money in between the line items in this account number to make up for shortfalls in one and decreasing another one where we had additional amount of expenditures budgeted.
It's a wash, basically.
It's a wash, yes.
Okay. Sorry. I was using the wrong word. Wash.
It's absolutely a wash, yes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Commissioner Serino?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Irvin?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson? Commissioner Piercy?
Yes.
Commissioner P?
Motion carries.
Okay. So, the last amendment that I have is Fund 177, which is our capital projects amendment. This is also a cleanup as well. And Commissioner, this is a wash as well. This budget neutral, nothing, but just changing in between line items. This Fund 177 Capital Projects Year-End Cleanup Amendment Budget funds for expenditures for maintenance and repair services for projects that occurred in FY 23-24. This amendment moves money from multiple line items to object code. This object code is actually stated wrong here. It's 335 instead of 355 without increasing or decreasing revenues and expenditures. This allows several line items to have money amended into them, so they will not be over budget at year-end. And like I said, that should be 335 and not 355.
Any questions? Have a motion? I hear a second.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Call roll.
Commissioner Serino?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Irvin?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Commissioner P?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Hey, that moves us down to item 10. And that is actually the 24-25 Tax Levy Resolution. And that's actually what we sent for publication, which we voted on, what, two meetings ago, I guess it was? Michael, you want to...
So, I'll be glad to go through every paragraph if you want me to. But this is the tax rate that was approved to go to publication. This is a no-tax increase. It does shift the pennies around that we spoke about at our previous meeting and that we spoke about at public comment, or at the public hearing the other night. But again, there is no tax increase, so the tax rate would stay at $1,8762. I'll be glad to read through each section if you would like. But that talks about how we split certain revenues in the county, such as will tax, sales tax, interest, and things like that. But I... things like that, but I have no changes for that tonight from the finance office.
Proposed a wave reading.
Any, any other discussion from any of the committee members? You know, this is something we're gonna have to pass or stay here until we decide to pass it, or, or not adjourn, but come back to, but if you've got any questions on that, I mean, now's the time to ask them. We do have a couple of changes, or appropriation resolution coming up after this, it'll be some slight changes, but it will not affect this in any way. Is that correct, Michael?
That is correct.
I make a motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve, do I hear a second, and a second? Okay, this is on the tax levy resolution for '24-'25. Any further discussion? Call roll, Mark.
Commissioner Shrengio?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Irvin?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. Pier, Piercy? Commissioner P?
Yes, motion carries. Item 11 is the '24-'25 appropriations resolution, and there's several things that we need to cover, or folks have indicated they wanna cover, and I'm gonna list them real quick, and then, one will be the opioid changes. There's also a question about the library system, also, the mayor's got a request about a ongoing summer cookout, and possibly some money from Smyrna. Having said that, I'm gonna recognize Chairman Harris, he has asked me, if you would, address the library system first, if, if you don't mind.
Yeah, there was, um, there was a meeting, I had gotten a call from the mayor, Murf Sperrill, and I had talked to Mayor Carr, and there is a little bit ambiguous as, as to maintenance of effort on what I, what I made a motion on to cut their budget by $350,000. It was a little ambiguous as far as whether we could do that on maintenance of effort, that is not, there's not been a MOE conversation, I mean, it hadn't been approved or had not been approved, but what the library board and what the city mayors wanna do is, instead of me taking, or taking, us taking $350,000 from the budget, is to put that back into the budget, but in return, they will give us $525,000 out of their extraordinary fund in quarterly payments. And I'll make a motion, and the mayor will talk on that, I talked to him about this, but what it is, is they're just simply taking their in-funding balance and writing a million dollars to all the cities and the county, and our part of it will be $527,000, not $392. I've concurred with the mayor on this, and we both agree that we need to make a, a different motion on that, so what I propose is that we put the $350,000 back into the budget, and that we approve to accept the $527,000. If they agree to do that, if they, if they say they're gonna do this, but if they don't do that, then we have, we don't have to pay them their quarterly payment. Is that fair enough? I'm gonna, I'm gonna let the mayor talk, and I'm gonna let Michael talk, and then I'm gonna make a motion. Is that okay?
So, I want, I wanna ask, we have several changes to make tonight to the appropriations resolution. Do y'all wanna vote on each individual change, or do y'all wanna discuss all these changes and we can cover them all in one? So as I'm keeping notes and changing live here, if y'all could let me know which one route you might wanna take.
One resolution.
Thank you. My suggestion, too, we do it as one, and go ahead and discuss all of them, I mentioned several of them there, we can just head right down the line, if that's all right, Michael.
It'd be a little easier on me to, to do it that way, if that's okay with the committee.
Okay, and, and so, your motion will come, or, or have you got something else?
I'll make a motion now, if you want me to, and then open up and discuss.
Let's wait till we address all of them, we're gonna do it as one motion.
Okay.
Okay, if, if that's okay with the rest of the committee.
Are these summarized somewhere? I'm just looking.
No, they are not. And I, I may miss some of them, Michael.
My hope is to, to verbally summarize all of the changes that, that we talk about here under this item, and that way that me and Mark make sure we get everything to the penny, so that when we revise this for Monday, that it's, you know, exact to the penny.
So let's, let's talk about opioid, for, Mayor, you've got?
Yeah, I just, I wanna comment on Chairman Harris's remarks, so when Chairman Harris brought the original motion, and it was second, and it was voted on unanimously by this committee to reduce funding by $350,000, I was in agreement with that, and, but however, that was prior to the board, the library board, taking this vote, and prior to, obviously, us, the committee, and myself receiving this letter, and so, with the help of Michael Smith and Steve Sullivan, the chair of the board, we worked out this payment method, so to address Chairman Harris's very direct question is, if we make a quarterly payment, and they in turn don't make a timely quarterly payment of the $527,392, then, in my mind, Chairman Harris, I think you're saying the same thing, we're not obligated to make any additional quarterly payments, is that correct?
Sir.
So Chairman Harris and the mayor are on the same page, and so, I support his motion, and the library board supports that motion, and so I think this is a equitable solution and a fair compromise, and so I would hope that you would support it. Thank you.
Okay, Michael, do you wanna mention the opioid motion that we'll need?
So, tonight, the opioid line?
Could I ask a question, just to be sure I understand what's going on, on the library?
Yes, yes, go ahead, you're recognized.
Okay, thank you.
I don't wanna pass by these till we get a-
Before we get to the next, so basically, we're adding back the 350, and in exchange, we're getting, and that, they, they've established a need for that, and then either through this maintenance of effort concept or some concept, and then, they are going to return portion of their fund balance back to us by agreement, is that the basic plan? I'm just-
Exactly the plan.
Okay, sorry, I just, I wanna make sure.
So what they wanna do is, they wanna take, they have a, they got between two and two and a half million dollar fund balance, so they're gonna draw that fund balance down, and so, and in order, in exchange for drawing that down and rebating back to us, we're gonna reinstitute the 350,000 of our, of that part of that payment, does that make sense? So we, we net out about $171,000.
Yeah, that, I understand, thank you very much.
Okay, Michael.
So based on all the opioid items that were approved tonight, line item 55-17599-OPD1 will need to change and add $385,206 to the opioid category to that line item, and that new total will be $511,106, and so that, that would cover the four that you saw tonight on the previous agenda item, and then it would also cover interfaith dental that was previously approved by this body, so that would change the opioid line item tonight.
Any questions on this opioid money that we're talking about here? This is basically something that was approved by the opioid board, passed forward from the opioid funds to the commission for approval, and this will be part of the whole motion when we get through here, so any other questions on the opioid portion? Here none, Michael. Let's see, I wanna ask Chairman Harris, you had said something to me about Smyrna.
So I talked to five commissioners, and I got a phone call from Mayor Reed, they are wanting to add a, for their senior citizen center, they're asking for us if we could give them, a, award them some monies, and in the, I think it's the amount of $5,000. So this will go to help them on the senior citizens, Smyrna, we have got calls from commissioners that are supportive of this, the mayor's also supportive of this, I'm supportive of this, and I'd like to make a motion, do I need to make a motion now, or?
Well, just say, say what, what's the amount that you'd like to add, and, you know, if we get a second, when we get all these together, unless I hear somebody else on this committee say, hey, we wanna split these, we agreed we're gonna vote them all together, so just the amount of $5,000 you'd like to add to, to give to, award to Smyrna City, is it, or, is it, am I reading?
Smyrna, yes, the senior citizen center.
Okay, the Smyrna-
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question? Chairman Harris, my understanding, is this for their capital building project, their capital building project as opposed to their, what we normally give them in maintenance, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that'll be $5,000 for our capital project for the Smyrna Senior Center. Next, Mayor? I've got a note here about a summer cookout.
Yes, sir, so, in an effort to stay competitive with our employees, because of course, we don't just compete with other counties and municipalities, but we compete with the private sector, and sometimes it's a challenge on the pay side, we're always trying to figure out ways that we can retain our good folks and attract good folks, and a small thing that we had left over in the mayor's budget was a little bit of money for a, what we hope will be an annual employee picnic, where, of course, you've been allergic to that, it's gonna be on July 1, and what I would ask this committee is to approve the mayor's recommendation to add an additional $20,000 in next year's budget to HR, so they can have the funds to plan what would hopefully be an annual event for our employees, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so you've heard that request, and that would not come out of the mayor's budget, which I think it's coming out of this year, but if approved, it would come out of HR's budget, which of course, works with our employees. Any questions on that, or any other comments?
Do we need to add the money to HR's budget now?
We will, I think, on the, the one, when I summarize everything, I'll, we'll add it there at the end, when we summarize it on the resolution here in a second.
The $20,000?
Yes. Michael, the only other thing I've got down here is a 177 appropriations.
So I have, I have one request to change there, and if y'all remember back when we were moving pennies around to go to publication, we were doing some of those estimates and movements on the fly, and I would like, I need to amend Fund 177 by $1,587, and for that new total to be $18,977,525, to make all the property tax and everything in line, so, that's the request, other request from me.
So that's, that's got all of the items that we wanted to address on this motion, which start off with was the opioid funds, then a request to give $5,000 to Smyrna's Senior Center, and then the request on the, to return to the library board the 300 and, I think, 350, anyway, we have that on an agreement, a letter on your desk there, and then, a summer cookout to raise HR's budget by 20,000, and then, to move 177 appropriation, what, added $1,587, I think's correct, so those are the numbers that we're looking at. Do I hear a motion?
I think Mark needs a clarification.
Michael, did you want to increase the revenue, line 48-130?
But I'm on, I'm gonna ask the chairman here to recap, if you'll let me recap everything, I wanna read through everything once, if that's okay?
Please do.
So this'll be a little bit different order, I made a note, thinking some of these changes might be coming, so I'm gonna run through these, not in the exact same order y'all mentioned them, but the first change that, that was proposed tonight, that'll be as part of this resolution, will be to add $20,000 to line 51-310-599, that'll be HR's budget, but that's the $20,000 for the annual employee recognition event. Next would be to add $385,206 to line 55-17599-OPD1 for the opioid things we spoke about tonight, that new total would be $511,106. Next is the library change, and we would add $350,000 back to line 101-56900-316, for that new total to be $276,801, and that would equal the exact same amount that we gave them last year. In addition, we would add to revenue line item 101-48130, $527,392, and those payments to be received quarterly. Next, we would add, for the Smyrna Senior Citizen Center, for their capital fund, $5,000 to line item 56-900-316. Then we would amend Fund 177, and specifically the educational capital projects category within that fund, but that would increase by $1,587, and the new total for that fund on both revenue and expenditures would be $18,977,525. And those are the changes that I have. Mark, did that get, I think that got them all. Okay.
Guys, any questions on any of these specific changes? I think we talked on pretty well.
Yeah, on the library, on the library, Michael, while we, we cut these budgets, because we wanna give a 1% across the board to our, to our county employees, so I just wanna make sure that that money that we're getting from the library goes towards that 1%, or it helps funding it.
It, it will, so what happens is, that's gonna go to a general fund revenue, a contributions line item, the line I read, 48-
130.
48-130, that is a contributions line item in the general fund, so that will go to, still fund the general fund raises in there, in that fund, so it, it will, it will do that to what?
And Mr. Chairman, do I need to make a motion as to if, to make sure we get it on record, that if they don't pay, should I put that on a motion?
You certainly can do that, I will tell you that it's, well, you can do that, it won't, if, even if you didn't make that motion, we're not gonna, we're, I've been assured by Steve Sullivan, the chair, by Mindy Barrett, and by Michael Smith, that is not gonna be an issue, but if it, but you're more than welcome to make that motion, and I wouldn't object to it.
You want me to do it on the library, or, or you're wanting to motion all the way across?
I want a motion to carry all of them.
Okay.
If that's, you know, that's what we said we were gonna do to start off with, so this, this would cover all the appropriation, well, the appropriation resolution with the changes that Michael just listed.
Okay.
So I'll entertain a motion for that.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve all.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the '24-'25 appropriations resolution as amended, is that okay with you? And a second, any discussion? Call roll, Mark.
Commissioner Shrengio?
Yes.
Commissioner Gooch?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Irvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Piercy?
Yes.
Commissioner P?
Yes, motion carries. Down to other business, I don't have other business, but I do wanna make a couple of quick comments. One is our next meeting is the 24th at 9:00 a.m., where the full commission will meet to decide this tax levy. Also, I wanna thank each and every one of you, committee members, Mayor Tucker, Michael especially, for all the work and effort that y'all put into this, thank you, you've done a good job.
Any other comments?
Chairman P.
You're recognized.
I'd like to thank you for chairing our committee, no one seems to ever mention that, so I'm gonna mention that tonight, I think you've done an excellent job.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate that. Chairman Phillips?
Just one thing, Mark, will you get with Rachel tomorrow, so we can have the agenda disseminated by tomorrow for the 24th meeting? If I may interject, I doubt that's gonna be possible, Mr. Chairman, Rachel's off tomorrow.
We've, we've gotta get it out.
Without an agenda.
Before Monday at 9 o'clock.
I will say this, after, eat, most nights, as soon as after the meeting, we send it out, we, Mark sends it to, to the mayor's office, it'll probably go out tonight, if not, first thing in the morning, probably before we even open, so that's generally the case, but, but if Carla's gonna take care of it, we'll get with Carla in the mayor's office.
Carla's gonna do it. Thank you.
Okay, so you guys will be seeing your agenda. Any other questions? Here none?
Just, just real quick, I wanna make sure that Ms. Jolly is helping Sonya Cook at the picnic. at the picnic.
I'm going to let you take that up with Ms. Jolly.
Well, I don't want Sonya to be cooking all by herself. We'll make sure she's got some help.
We may, we may do, to amend the budget on Monday for that.
I'll get with Ms. Jolly.
Okay, guys. We're adjourned.